Okay, first on the list, public hearing. Proposed amendments to the Lee County Procurement Policies and Practices Ordinance. Lee County Board of Supervisors proposed a public hearing on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, 5:30 PM in the Jonesville District Courtroom, the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Texas. The purpose of the public hearing is to take public comment on proposed amendments to the Lee County Procurement Policies and Practices Ordinance currently in effect. The purpose of the proposed amendments is to increase the minimum contract value requiring public advertisement of bid and bidding generally. Do we have anybody here on that side? All right. Here now, we'll move on. Departmental reports, constitutional officers.
Senator, you gonna take any action on this?
I make a motion that we adopt proposed amendments to county procurement policies and practices. Okay, you got a motion on the floor?
Sir.
Are you clear on what that is done? Do we need to sign?
The basic change is increasing the limit that requires public bidding to 25,000 from 10,000. We can take quotes. A lot of times we'll take minutes, but typically on smaller purchases, we take quotes rather than publicly advertised bids. But we still provide competition even in raising that to 25,000, and we still provide maintenance and management possible, seeking multiple quotes.
So it's just section 12.5, would you believe those thresholds from 10 to 25?
I believe that's the only two, but yeah, that's the only two sections that are effective.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor, does that make?
Sir.
All in favor?
Ah.
Any of them?
Right, sir.
Okay, now we'll move on to departmental reports. Constitutional officers, Treasury Court. Everybody's had a chance to look over them, got any questions? Okay, actually we have public expression. Anybody here for public expression?
I don't think the first responders are on the budget. Our understanding is that some of them were here, that Brian was here for that.
There were supposed to be some here. Looks like I'm on one that's here. Do you all have that on here? Was you just wanting to hear it from us during public expression, or?
Well, it's not on the agenda. Somebody called me about it this morning and said that they were coming to speak, as I understood there were several of you coming, and I said, "Well, you're not on the agenda, so just make sure you get your public expression if you want to be heard."
Yeah, and I don't have anything, you know, I made the presentation to you guys with what I had to propose, and I really don't have anything that I wanted to add beyond that, so.
I have, we received two additional requests, and I'm gonna make you aware of that later in the meeting tonight. One had some follow-up from Brian Skidmore regarding the airbags on a countywide basis. He had two different quotes on that and a cover letter with that, which we will provide copies of to you. I don't have copies with me tonight. We'd also gotten, the Thomas Walker Fire Department, he stopped by late last week, wasn't sure if Brian had submitted anything, so he basically submitted a request for the airbag units, for their units one and two. And then I had a call from one of the rescue squads this afternoon, and I think they've been talking, I guess maybe they've heard the comments that were made about working comprehensively, so I think they're, I recommended that they get together and submit a request, a written request for what they, for what they're looking for.
Okay, I guess, no more. We'll move on to approval amendments. October 12th, 2021 recess meeting, and October 26th, 2021 regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve amendments, is correct.
Make a motion to approve amendments.
Sir.
And a second, all of those in favor?
Ah.
Any of them? Okay, we got next approval of refunds, and I hope I get it this round right, Hazel, and Trevor, Deborah Short, and Kerry Morgan.
Make a motion, we approved these, and don't recommend these, but Chris Young.
Okay, you got a motion to approve all three of them, is that what you're proposing?
Sir.
And a second, all of those in favor?
Ah.
Any of them? And next, we have county administrator's reports of payroll warrants that have been issued, and approval of disbarment.
Yes, I'm like, motion, technically.
Okay.
Sir.
Got a motion and a second?
Sir.
All of them?
Ah.
Any of them?
Ah.
Okay, next on the list, we got delegations. First, Delta Airborne Consultants' Engineering Proposal for Jet Tank Project Rust, sorry, Rust, Ashford.
Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight, and Mr. Poe asked that Delta Airborne Consultants provide the price for putting together a bid package and installation oversight, that sort of thing, for, for a jet eight tank at the airport. We will provide that development of specifications, exhibits for layout and locations, and assistance with the procurement, as well as installation oversight for a cost of approximately $50,000. The specifications will cover procurement, manufacturing, shipping, placement, installation of the pumps, piping, wiring, provide a total turnkey operation. That, the pricing that will be requested from each of the vendors will include all the fees, permits, training, inspections, provide that turnkey installation. We talked about at one point in time of a 10,000 gallon tank, there's a 10,000 gallon out of gas tank there now. Based on my research and talking with other people in the company that have done several of these in the past five years or so, we would probably recommend the use of a 12,000 gallon tank. One, the reason for that is the tank is typically not, going from 10 to 12,000 is just, is not a whole lot, as far as, as far as the tank cost itself, because you still gotta have all the piping pumps and all the bells and whistles that go with it. So, going to that, the other thing from there is that you can only fill that tank to about between 90 and 95 percent. You get an alarm at 90 percent capacity, you get full, or you get shut off at 95 percent of capacity. You do that on the 10, 10,000 gallon tank, you only got 9,000, between 9,000 and 9,500 capacity. You gotta run it down pretty low to get an 8,000, or 8,500 gallon load of, full load of fuel. After talking with Mr. Poe about that, you might be able to get a lesser amount, so that may or may not be a concern, but that's something that we can talk about during the design and putting together the specifications for that, but that's something that we have looked at in the past. The other thing is depending on what fire code is here, typically, the last one that I saw that we did in the, in the state of Virginia was about four, four to five years ago, Hot Springs in Engelsfield, and that was just a typical standard steel, double wall steel tank. We're doing one that we're, that we're getting ready to bid in Pennsylvania right now, they use the AFC fire code, there's a different tank requirement for, for the, for the fire code that they use there, they use the international fire code in Pennsylvania. I'm not sure, and the difference in the tank is, is the UL 42 is just a standard double wall steel tank. The UL 2085 is called a protected tank, and it requires a lightweight concrete between the, between the two double walls to protect that tank from getting punctured, whatever, gives it some extra protection, that's why it's called a protected tank. And the international fire code calls for class one and class two, which, which out gas is class one, jet fuel, jet A is, is class two. Both of those require the UL 2085 tanks, that's something we have to research to figure out whether or not that, that that would, that that would be required. That's just some of the things we can talk about, other things that you want, overween self-serve, or under, and/or underween single point fueling capacities, what kind of capacities you want, what kind of suitable holds lengths that you need, ground and rails, sump heaters, we can discuss all of that with, with airport board, with the county, with potential end users that might be using it to see what kind of capacities and what kind of bells and whistles or accessories they'd like on their, on their, to be able to use it more effectively. We can talk about that. Delta wants to work with county on this, we've worked with the county on the airport, and we want to work with you on this project, but we need to be involved from the very beginning. It's, and walk through the whole procedure. We're not going to be comfortable if, to come in after the fact and try to evaluate quotes or proposals that maybe the county gets. We'd like for it to be a level playing field and, and put the, put the, the whole entire package with all the bells and whistles and make sure we get a complete turnkey job, so that way, we can make sure that the county gets what you really want out there when you, when you put that together for bidding. So, anybody have any questions for me?
Any other questions?
All right, thanks very much.
Okay, next on the list, we got transfer station employee salary increases, Brian.
I'm not sure.
People listening.
Good evening, gentlemen, glad you all take the time to listen to us this evening. Reason we want to talk is just about the raise you all give Gary and not us. We all agreed that the extra raise the board gave Gary was probably an unfire to the transfer station employees. We've asked for extra money, and we was told that we don't do enough to get extra money. The board giving Gary the extra money has done nothing but killed the morale, got employees looking for employment elsewhere. We're already underpaid, and giving Gary the extra money just made things worse. The county's had an opening now for about a year at the transfer station, and it's not had to give the first application. This being said, we don't need to leave, leave as good workers. We have good employees, they've proven themselves that they're good workers, and this is because, you know, giving Gary the extra money and not giving other employees the extra money they deserve. We just like to know why that Gary deserved the extra money and we don't. I know Gary's department head, we, we understand that, but he's already been paid, department head paid for the role he's had, so we don't understand the extra money he's got. And, like to hit on the morale, transfer station, it's, it's always been a good place to work, we've all got along good, we've got a good group of guys. If Gary's here, you can ask him, the morale, he can tell you it's way down. I mean, everybody's always took an extra step and done extra things that they're, really don't have to do what their job says, but they've always took the extra step to, to help somebody out here or do the extra work. Couldn't tell you the times that each, each one of us had worked through lunch, not took lunch to make sure that the job got done, whether it be after a holiday weekend picking up trash, the drivers, a lot of times won't even eat lunch, don't have time to eat lunch and get their whole route out of it. Whether it's, if we're working the site, we might be coming down to Getson Station or wherever it be, instead of taking the lunch and not finishing that site, loading all the equipment, driving all the way back up here to this transfer station, have to get up next morning for work, load everything up and go straight back there and finish a third minute or an hour job. But, we just ask that the board would give us the extra money, give Gary, we feel we deserve it, and I just want to thank you for listening to what I have to say, there's a few other people here I believe that want to speak to and say a little bit, but I want to thank you for your time.
Before you take off, let's, let's give our board a chance to speak. Any questions?
Does Gary know you're all up here?
We, when we first found out Gary got the raise, we did talk to him back in the break room and asked him why he got a raise and we didn't, and we did tell him that we were going to go to the board meeting, so, yeah, we didn't come behind his back, I mean, we told him that we were going to come talk to the board about it.
You did get a raise, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, Gary is the department head.
Yes, sir.
Like it's hurt or killed over there, they're not going to come talk to Roger back there, they're not going to come talk to him. You give somebody the authority, responsibility, you gotta give the authority with them. And there was other people here, in different departments, that Gary was making less of, and I know what you guys do over there. And a pay raise is something that we discussed with the last board meeting. And you don't need to be mad at Gary, you don't need to be mad at what money Gary makes.
We had experts mad at Gary, and you can ask Gary, we told him, you know, as a person, and I'm talking for, I'm not just talking for myself, okay? We told Gary this lady got a raise, and you can ask Gary, we didn't bash him, he was not in any way, we put Gary down when we talked to him, you know, we just asked him why, and told him just wasn't fired, we didn't take. And I mean, I understand Gary's got a role.
So what you're asking, for the same money, he got it?
Well, I think it's just fair, I mean, Gary, well, I'm just saying, he, he, he's getting the department head paid already, I mean, he's, he's, he's way above, I mean, he's making almost 18,000 more dollars a year than about everybody over there almost. And he's, I understand certain things Gary's going to be accountable for, but Gary's not responsible if Roger goes there and kills somebody going down the road. He, he's responsible for certain things that can happen at the transfer station, I agree with that, but that's, I mean, I'm just telling you what, how we feel, I mean, we do a lot over there, and I just think that it wasn't right, and I mean, it's, I'm feeding for me and these guys too, they'll tell you too, but.
I don't have a problem if somebody asks you for more money, but I never know nobody to come in and talk about what supervisor makes, and boss makes. I mean, all my years of work, and I never did question about six to 10, about what he made. I mean, I knew where I was at and what I was supposed to be doing and what I made, and...
So to be clear, you're asking for about $2 an hour?
I think you got a dollar eighty-two, I believe. I mean, a lot of these guys, he's making like 13 dollars an hour, I mean, it's, it's safe, I mean, it really is, and Gary's at 23,91 now, I mean.
You know, I like to add a couple things, you know, just to hit on a couple things that you said, you know, I can speak for myself on this, you know, working through lunch break, my last 15 years of work, I never took the first lunch break. Thirty-four and a half years of work, I never had a special job, I done anything that needed to be done, you know, that, that's what I signed up for. Now, I understand money, I do understand, you know, and I, you and I talk, we try to do what we can afford to do with the money we have, it ought to go so far. I'll, I'll state this, and I'll be, I'll be real clear about it. During the day, I think we, we even this past year, we gave you all a little additional money just for your bones. During the day at about any given time, there's employees on the different social media sites, which tells me they're not on lunch break. I mean, I can look at the times they're on, I got to pull it up, and I can look at, there's different employees, I wouldn't, never name any of them, but they're on social media. If they're on social media, they're not doing their job. I think you all understand that, too, I mean, that's, that's one of the things that I look at, you know, when it comes to being fair about raises and everything else, I mean, if you got time to, if you got time to be on social media and some of those things, it's kind of tough to look and say, "Well, you're not making enough money," but it's kind of tough on my, my side of looking at things, knowing that we got somebody, maybe nothing, but in their, their day to work here. And I know you know there's people that does that, because everybody on social media.
Yeah, everybody does, and I mean, it breaks my heart to be in.
I wanted to get that out.
But, you know, I, I don't want to say what that means.
As far as, as far as what you've said about Roger, or anybody else going down the road killing somebody, truth of the matter is, it does come back to Gary, because he is the department head.
I'm saying, he won't be accountable for that, because they're...
It would still come back to him.
No, it won't, I don't see how.
If you go back to the truck driver, I hate to interrupt. But don't interrupt.
Okay, okay.
It's not a good idea.
Well, I mean, talking about, since you've talked about social media, I mean, everybody over there pretty much does their job, they do, I mean, but there's times, and I mean, each one of these guys can tell you, and I hate to say that, there's times we sit there, and it ain't because we're sitting there, it's because we're not being told to do something, I'll put it that way. I mean, I'm not being hateful, but it's like you're attacking us for being on social media and saying we're not doing that.
No, I didn't attack you, I just said, I'm just saying, it happens.
But I'm just saying there's times.
It may be on a break, I don't know that.
No, there's times.
But do I know that if I'm looking and I see this person here on Facebook, or this person on Snapchat, or this person here on Twitter, or, you know, whatever the case may be, they're there. I look, they're there.
But I'm just saying, it might be a time where we're sitting there being, waiting to be told to do something. It might not be that they're not doing their job, was told, hey, do this job, and they're not doing it.
And I understand that, too, I do agree with you on that. You know, that's hard for somebody to see that's looking at, you know, whether, you know, they're just sitting there waiting on something to do, or, or whether it's killing time, I mean, it's hard to make that justification, but, but it's there, in black and white. I mean, I even screenshot sometimes, just to, just to know, just to compare times of what time maybe you eat, some of you guys eat lunch or whatever. I don't take it any further than that, I just, you know, just in case somebody calls me and says, "Well, you know, I really worked, you know, all day long, so and so," and, you know, there might be that case of, "Well, maybe you didn't," but anyways, that's, that's all I've got to say about that, but I did, I understand, you know, I do understand where you come from, also, there's two sides to everything, I know that.
Yeah, I was just trying to say, it isn't going one sided, I mean...
How many employees work at the transfer station, not the local coordinator?
I would say, General Gary.
Yeah, seven.
General Gary said that.
How many of them have CDLs?
Every one, everybody.
I mean, and having your license, or you have license to operate the transfer station?
Just me and Gary, yes. And that was another thing that you all, kind of, say, y'all say that you're giving Gary the extra money and something happens, what if I'm in control, Gary takes a vacation for a week and one of these, I'm in control then, okay? If that's what you're saying Gary's getting extra money for, what happens if something happens and he's gone and I get in trouble? I mean, because then, when Gary's gone for a week or whatever, then...
You're the boss.
I'm the boss, I'm, what you're saying, if Roger goes down the road and kills somebody, then I'm going to be in trouble for it, but I didn't receive extra money for being, for that department.
Who told you that you don't do enough to get paid for it?
Gary, when we had the meeting the day after what you robbed, he said the reason you all didn't is because the board said we didn't do enough to get extra money. That's what was said, and I mean, Rob was right there the morning, he said, "I never thought you'd be doing that much."
Anyway, I just see, I mean, as, as corporate, always be a gap between the boss and the board.
I understand that, that's just how that is, but I never said that. I'm, I'm not saying that you all, that's what we were told, that's what, me and Rob, the morning we asked him, with Rob, and that's what was said, that we didn't do enough, that...
Who told you that?
Gary told us that.
But on the other hand, too, you take, I'd say, the administrators office over, I'd say that's a pretty good gap between the secretary in there, that you walk in, and then go on into the agents officer, probably a pretty good gap, too. I mean, you got to understand, I mean, there's several different departments.
I understand it, but I mean, what, we know, just understand what more, how much more is he doing that deserves that much more than everybody there, I mean...
About the department. You're not saying there shouldn't be a gap, are you?
No, I'm not saying there shouldn't be a gap, but not that kind of gap.
You're saying that the gap is wide.
It's, it's, it's too wide, I believe. Like I said, I mean, these guys here, I mean, 13 dollars and something an hour, how many places can you go and get people that can do electrical work, plumbing work, carpenter work, welding, you name it, and they can make that over there, you know? See, I mean, each person can do a lot there, and I mean, it's, it's labeled as a general labor job, but there's no general labor at that transfer station, it's all pretty much skilled work. Today, we found that the metal walls over there are tearing, me and Rob cut them out, replaced walls, welded them back, cut out metal to fit in the corners, and, I mean, Joe blow down the road, there's not going to come in and be able to do that kind of work, and, you know, not like, you know, skilled workers make good money.
This is up to the board ultimately on whether they want to do it, but I know from our conversations, and I think several of you have talked to board members, there are things that can be said that you're not saying, and I don't, I'm not saying that they need to be said in open session, but if the board was agreeable, are there things that you'd like to say in closed session regarding the pay and performance?
Oh, I'm sure they are, I mean, I'm sure each person here probably has something they'd like to say. That's what I'm saying, it's, and I'm not saying, Davey, I didn't mean to say you attacked us when you said that about the social media, I didn't, I didn't, I'm just saying that, you know...
And also, you're saying, too, you know, you're saving the county money, because if you got these other people can do all this, but what if you just...
you got these other people can do all this stuff, but what if you just do your job and something electrical has to come up? You come over here and call the guy administrator, or he comes for a board, says, you know, we gotta have electrical work over there. If you just do your job, I mean, not do this other stuff. When you hired in, you didn't hire in as an electrician or a plumber or whatever you said. You hired in, you know, as a general worker.
As a general worker.
And if you're a truck driver, you drive your truck. So, if, if all this other stuff comes up, why is it you have to...
Right, we're being asked to do it? I mean, if Gary asks you to do it, is, I guess, I don't know if he talks to...
Well, most of the time, we, we try to, we try to use the skills and abilities that they have available rather than having to contract it out.
But they're wanting more money for that too.
Yeah, but it would still be cheaper, I mean, if you were cheap, that's just like welding bottles on a can. I mean, a can now is seventeen hundred dollars for one can. We can buy a bottle now, I think, for four hundred something dollars. If you get somebody like Don Roop or somebody like that, you're looking at probably eighty plus dollars an hour to work on something like that. And it'd be cheaper to buy the can, it would fix it, if you had, pretty much, if you had Don or somebody like that do it.
With the cover painted on it, the general public can't tell the difference in a repaired can and a brand new cigarette sleeve.
And we can put pretty much almost two cans out a day. And that's cutting, cutting the bottom off, prepping, prepping it, uh, you know, getting it ready.
Make a thirteen dollars an hour, Robbie Becker, make a thirteen dollars an hour.
Thirteen forty something, I believe.
Thirteen dollars, I mean.
What do you bump it to?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know, it's, I just think that...
I mean, I...
In my opinion, I mean, at least, I'm just saying at least sixteen something an hour problem. I mean, that's not my call to make, but I mean, I just don't think that they're being highly paid. And I mean...
How much less do you make for Gary?
About four dollars and something an hour.
That sounds like it, the development system, that's what you're talking about.
But man, by God, those made any money in the money?
I don't argue that fact, but I'm just saying that, I mean, as a whole, Gary was over there getting department head pay, so why all of a sudden you bump him up another dollar or two? I mean, that's what, he made that for twelve years.
I think Gary's gonna answer that question, or, I mean, he's, he's, the secretary of the boss worked calling him over. There's probably, I think there was another, I think there was a couple more, uh, reasons I know that we, it was voted on. But, uh, it all didn't just involve, it all just didn't involve, God sees the boss and it wasn't that. Anybody else got any more questions, Brian?
I don't have a question, but here, my thoughts overall about it are that there were things that you said when we talked that concerned me that I think should be taken up in closed session. Second thing, I brought it up last month, and I think Mr. Poe was supposed to give us the schedule of what everybody makes in the county. And it's not just a problem of you all not making enough money, it's a problem of a lot of county employees not making enough money. And I think we should look at it comprehensively. You know, usually we look at it just during budget cycle, but with inflation the way it is and wages going up the way they are, I think we should look at before the end of the year, make some decisions about your department and all the, and all the departments. So, I think you all need a raise. Not saying anything good or bad about Gary, but I, I think your department needs a raise.
Well, we discussed that last month. I don't think anybody disagrees with that, but...
I don't think any of you raise.
Like I said, I think, you know, the rest of the departments, I mean, they all do. But there again, you know, and we have to just kinda look at what kinda money we got before we can just come out and say, you know, we gotta look at it and pay it, we still gotta have money to pay it. There's a saying for that, but I won't, I won't use it. Maybe in a public, or in a private city, maybe.
Got an idea, come in.
He's had that thought, I think.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Tim Cole, I'm a truck driver for the transfer station. And I'd like to make a suggestion to the board that y'all redo that as a laborer. You know, if you hire somebody tomorrow, list them as a skilled worker, determine on what you find out about them in the interview, but don't list them as a laborer and pay them, you know, laborer's wage. Cause that's basically what is, what's being done, you know? Cause I mean, you can go to, you can go to McDonald's and make eleven, eleven fifty an hour, you know? And they are highly skilled. We've got a bunch of good people that can go out and do multiple things, you know? And that acts like less there. You know, we haven't had to take a smiley engine over to the shop. I don't know how much money he has saved us in a year, you can go back and check, you know? But we don't have to pay laborers to have stuff worked on. He can take care of it, he would, he's not being paid for, you know? And like Rob, you know, he can do multiple things. And, uh, all the rest too, Carter owned his own trucking company, and, but we got a bunch of skilled people. And I wish y'all could look at that when you list people as a laborer and, and change that, you know? List them as a skilled person, and it up to you all what you would pay them according to the interview, you know, what you find out about them. We've got a good, good bunch of people that you can get a lot of stuff done and save the county a lot of money. And thank you for your time, and I appreciate what you do, do for us, you know? Don't think that people are unappreciated of it, you know? And I know you've done what you could, and I hope you can help out more. But I think you really need to look into that, how you're listing people, you know, partying. We've not had that position as a laborer since we had helpers on the truck. You know, then, then they could move up if a opening opened up, and, you know, they qualified for a job, you know, and then they come up and pay, you know? I think that's a lot of the problem. Thank you.
Tim was at, at my office, I think, last week or something, and Tim made a statement which I really appreciated him making. That he, said he really appreciated his job. And I, I think if we all...
And, and I appreciated what y'all did do because it helped my retirement, and that's what I'm looking at, you know? I got three and a half more years and, and I plan on retiring. And, and the, as y'all know, the, the more you can make the last few years, the better off you are on, on your retirement. But anybody else wanna ask me a question?
I do, gotta ask one thing, I know we got a whole room full of y'all here, but is everybody gonna ask the same question?
I don't know. I have no idea.
Cause if it is, I mean, we can save a lot of time, we got a lot, we got a lot that we gotta do. I mean, I, I, it's not that, I, I don't wanna hear from everybody, just, I mean, we wanna hear the same, we wanna hear...
I have no idea. And someone might wanna touch on some other...
That's fine, that's, I mean, that's fine, I was just asking in general if it's all gonna be the same question, I mean, it's...
Tim, one reason, I guess, if we don't hire people in as skilled laborers, and I did with this in mind, you hire a repairman and you tell him to go shovel, tell people to get you that, ain't my job. It's the most three hated words that I know of.
I know, these ain't, guys ain't like it.
I know, I ain't saying they are, but I, you know, we, we hire somebody in as a welder, and he says, that's all I'm doing, you know? Then you got a problem, you have to...
Yeah, I just wish you wouldn't hire them in as a laborer and pay them laborer's wage, you know, start, you know, when they're not, you know, they're skilled people.
We pay them, we can afford to pay them.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And we got, uh...
I know you got, uh, financial issues and stuff like that.
We have had for the last seven, eight years, I mean, we've not had a valid budget. And it's just hard to throw money out there when you ain't got it.
But, but, uh, I mean, the, the pay's really low.
Oh, I disagree with you, Tim, and you're probably the...
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm losing all the money working through, but I chose to stay there, you know?
I appreciate that, you're decade, and I appreciate it.
And I have to say, uh, that, that I, I think I know a little bit about each one of you, and I, I personally think you're all good, you know, good at what you do, and I appreciate that.
You do a good job.
Well, you know, I'm, I try, and these other guys do too, you know? But thank you.
My name's Roger, I'm sure y'all will get tired of looking at us, but, you know, I, I've, I've heard the comment was made that, you know, we didn't appreciate this. Well, you know, everything's appreciated, and I'm, I'm sorry that we didn't tell you guys, you know? The clothes I'm allotted, I wear them to church on Sunday. It's, I wear them five, six, seven days a week, you know? That's just part of the purpose of this job. But, we all have our opinions and talk amongst ourselves, and really, I wish we would go behind closed doors. But, since we're not, we've all got our opinions. And our opinion is that we would not have had a raise had it not been for the minimum wage. And I hope these guys will back me up on that. That's the way we all feel. And then to go and give Gary more on top of that, even though he's the boss, you don't feel that is right. And back to Roger going down the road and going to run over somebody and kill him, I drive a truck that every day when I fuel it up, I look at the tar to see if there's wire hanging out of it. Because that truck needs to go and be lined up. I sat in that truck all summer long, there was no air conditioning in that truck. I don't know if it was meant to me or what, but I sat in it and cooked all summer. The excuse is gonna be John Carter couldn't get to it, that's true. There's other places besides John Carter's to get stuff worked on. And back to that tire, we wire that tar out part of the way on one side, then we go down and we pay Fannins thirty dollars to turn that tar around to try to get some more wire out of it. And you guys giving him another dollar and eighty-two cents for us? I mean, Gary's not gonna go to jail if I run over somebody for their my fault or that tar blows out. And, you know, I've told you, you know, y'all before, that CDL is something that we have to babysit. We can't get out here and run up and down the road and get them speeding tickets because your house insurance won't cover us, and we'll have to go down the road and hunt another job if you can find one. So, you know? And I don't know whether it's been willingly, purposely, or you don't want to. It's been eleven months and we've not hired nobody. And if you don't wanna hire anybody, that's fine, but just tell us, you know, be upfront with us. We asked Gary about his raise? Well, no, we didn't ask Gary about his raise. We asked him, Tim asked him, he said, was that across the board? And what his word was? Yes. Now, when somebody cannot be truthful with me, I lose faith in them. And this is not a Gary bash, it's about the money, but I hope somebody of those guys will speak some to us.
How long has that been pushed in, almost like I did tell my chairman this about it? I, I know you said that somebody was busy and didn't get it took care of.
Yes.
Did you find out that you could get it took care of though, would you?
How's that?
That's something that should be taken care of though.
Well, I should've thought so.
I mean, I think that somebody should've taken care of that.
I thought so. And that has been with that truck, it's been an ongoing problem since two thousand and sixteen. It came here, come summertime, they turned our conditioning on and it would not work. They would put freon in it, it was defective from the beginning, it had a leak. I was over personally at Peterbilt, they said they couldn't find it, but John did find a leak in it.
But those are things we don't know. I mean, just like what you said, it's the first time I've heard that. You know, but if we could've found out something about that fact when it was going on, you know, maybe we could've got it fixed, I mean...
But fellas, that's not good etiquette, going behind my, my boss to talk to you guys. I mean, you, sure, we might be doing that now, but in that situation, I didn't feel that was the right thing to do. So, I mean, you know, if I still get up here and I can't say crap to my boss...
Well, I can tell you that the board, at least, nobody on, on the board said to put you in a hot truck for punishment or something like that. I can, I can tell you that, if it's kinda what you're thinking.
No, I was not that saying.
Okay. And I didn't know we talked about the maintenance issues, uh, till we, you mentioned it during our talk, but...
But, you know, I know Gary's got a lot on his plate. I don't feel like I should beg anybody to... I think I should tell him one time, and I think that should be enough, because if he told me to go to Dryden and pick up the garbage, he'd expect me to do it the first time he told me. I don't think he would wanna have to come and tell me two or three times in one day to go do that. I mean...
I agree with you, and I, I got the next question, a follow-up question on the, the tire issue. I know having CDLs myself, I still currently am a full CDL, had one for a long time. It's not legal under CDL guidelines either, is it?
What's that?
If the wires are sticking out on the tire regardless.
Well, when I see that the wire is out of it...
The tire is on it, I mean, it's...
When I see the wire is hanging out of it, I don't ask. I take it to Fannins and say, fix this, it needs a tire. But, back again...
Need to run the min line.
Okay, the truck, they told us from the very beginning, they said it was supposed to be lined up from the factory, put the bed on it, line it up again. It wore out the first set of tires, they took it back over there, it wore out on both. They took it back over there, and, I mean, it was unreal. It seemed like it was something like three thousand dollars, I'm thinking, I might be wrong. I think so. They fixed one tire pretty good, I mean, it still wears that one some, but the other one, it still wears it. But no, I'm not gonna drive it knowingly with a wire hanging out of it, because I, when I get fuel, I...
But, but maybe I, maybe I misunderstood what you said, and I, I know what you're saying, but, but my understanding was you said if y'all take it to get it fixed, they just turn the tire around and the wire's just on the opposite side, and it's still showing regardless of the side.
Well, we don't lay the wire plumb down to the wire, you know? We try to catch it in a happy medium and turn it around, and it's still wearing the ins, you know, it's, the inside's where it's wearing, but it is, uh, you know, it's...
But the wire's not actually showing when you're driving.
Oh, no, I'm not, cause I say, I'm not gonna drive it like that.
Maybe I, I just misunderstood what you said, okay.
But I say I check it every time when I'm fueling. But I say I check it every time when I'm fueling.
Well, I'm Robert Allen. I guess I'm the one that's been talking about so much tonight. Uh, yeah, I do do a lot of our, uh, I just do my job, you know? Uh, do feel like I ought to give them all money, but it's a few of them. So, and, uh, it's about all we got. Got any questions, right?
No, like I said, I, you know, I can speak up. Again, for myself, you know, I have no problem whatsoever with any of your performance. But, like I said, we just have to, again, live with what we got.
Right. Well, you know, we appreciate everything y'all do to...
And again, before we're done, Larry brought it up. I think you brought it up. Robert brought it up. We have already been talking about it.
Right.
And not that we, has nothing to do with what Gary got. It's just a factor of what you want to do. Because I'm, I, you know, like I say, I'm not, I'm not a fan of bashing somebody when they're not beside you to stand there and get their, get their looks into. I've never been a fan of it. I'll never be a fan of it.
Right. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Many thanks, Leslie. I drive the boat truck over there. I do small engine work. I can weld. I'm, you know, I'm a jackbox guy. One of the things that really hurt me is, uh, this workforce program. You hire two guys, you started them off at fifteen bucks an hour. You can pass them anywhere along the road. All they're doing is sitting in a vehicle and just watching the people. They're on their phone. I've seen it. If you want me to, I can start taking pictures of them. They're just sitting there, you know? At least, me and Rod, Carter, or several, thirteen something, I... If you're gonna start them off, kind of bring us up to the same level. I mean, I'm glad Gary got a raise. I'm glad for what we got. But still yet, you know, and once again, on the workforce program, I never really understood that. Because you already got a lead coordinator who was actually doing what they're doing. All she needed was one extra head.
You're wrong. You don't know what you're talking about. And you just admitted it. So I've heard enough of that. We know what we paid them when we hired them, what their job is. That program generates a lot of money. And that's generating enough to give you a raise.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm tickled in.
Don't be criticized.
But what I'm saying is...
Don't be criticized.
No, it's just my point of view.
If you don't like it, you can...
It's my point of view, okay, what I see. See, I don't know the whole thing.
I'm trying. If you don't know what you're talking about, put them right here in my family.
But that's what I'm talking about.
It's, uh...
But it ain't just me. I've had a lot of people come up and ask me, "What does these guys do?" You just see them sitting there, driving it down the road and stuff. And I tell them, I say, "I don't really know."
They take these people out here to pick up trash?
Yeah, I know that. I've seen them. I've seen them. I've known them.
We didn't hire them to go pick up trash. They're supervising those people that are picking up trash. I've heard enough.
I know that. I know that. They've done a good job. I tell you what, took some of these roads that he definitely needed. And they've done a doggone good job cleaning them up.
If I may, you know...
That's what I...
Uh, they're actually, I mean, it's not like that they're, uh, I guess guaranteed jobs. I mean, if, if, if that works program don't bring out the amount of money...
Yeah, I know. Their job is, is open. I understand that. I understand that. But, you know...
But that, you know, and, and I'm not saying this because of what you said. I mean, I kind of say there's, you know, I understand frustrations too. I had frustrations with it myself, you know, first, because it's something that should have never happened. Not that we hired two shouldn't have never happened, but something happened during that time that should have never happened to cause us to hire two people. And, uh, the fact of the matter is, uh, those people, like Larry said, you know, we're, we're depending on them to generate enough money to help supplement.
Oh, I understand that. I understand that. You know, once again, you know, you started them off. I don't know the whole thing behind it.
A lot of it's political money.
Well, like I said, I didn't know all of it behind it.
And then, you know, and I may have told them that, because, like I say, I've never named names. But I can just say that somebody in a call, phone conversation with me about all this stuff, uh, getting back to, say, Gary's, and, uh, I guess that, that deal was about the, uh, the works guys. That made the statement to me that, uh, that was just one, another one of our important decision, uh, decisions, so... And I'll be honest, it didn't come across, you know, real well with me, I, you know, when I was told that. You know, knowing I try to do the best I can for everybody we have, we got.
I understand that. I understand that.
I think Larry, of course, said he wasn't on the board that time. Larry, Charles, Robert, and I know Dane and Jenny can attest to the fact that when I came on board, I was one of the big pushers to try to get your house insurance paid more or more so y'all could put more money in your pocket.
Appreciate it very much.
So, I'm not one that, you know, takes lightly about what, you know, who we have and, you know, try to help them out.
I'm, I'm expressing what I know. I mean, you know, I mean, I don't want to...
And that's what y'all are out there. You express on me what you...
But, you know, from my point of view, when you're out here and you're seeing this going on and stuff, you're like, you know, it, it just don't seem right, you know? I mean, I don't know the whole thing, but not a fact. When I started here, I interviewed and everything, and I was passed over, right? And then they used somebody else. God. Two, three weeks later, Mr. Poe called me and said, "Are you still interested?" And I said, "Well, yeah. I mean, I'm glad to be here. I love the job I'm doing. I love the guys I work with. I mean, we get along real good. I try to do everything I can." And, and like they said about the lawnmowers and stuff, yeah. I keep them from going over. And as soon as I get to them, I get them right back out so that we don't have no downtime. I mean, we can keep, keep right on keeping everything taken care of. I mean, I don't have no problem with it, but still yet, you know, it does make you feel bad. I mean...
Well, I can assure you that nothing we do is intended to make anybody feel bad.
I mean, I'm not talking about what you, it's just, here I am trying to do whatever I can to help the county and stuff. And, uh, I mean, I don't mind what I'm doing. I like what I do. But still yet, I think we do deserve a little more. I do want to thank you for your all this time.
Appreciate it.
And I'm sorry if I got under your skin. Um, so I...
You, you did, and I don't want people preaching to me about something.
I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But...
You're good.
Let me throw out a couple of things. I agree with what you're saying about y'all need a raise. I have, have no problem with that. But just, I guess for the record and for the, for the public and what gets trained, the works program gives us a report every month. Everybody else, most other departments give a quarterly report. We ask them to give a monthly report because they're, it's a new program. We want to know how it's doing. They're supervising twenty-nine people right now. And their report here in front of me says they picked up forty-four miles of highway in the county this month, or last month, sorry, October. Uh, the savings today, they, their program started in February. I can remember if it was the end of February or the beginning. But they're at a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars of savings right now. They keep up with it meticulously. I mean, they do a very good job. And that's all public record. You can't even look at it. What you were saying about, you know, they sit there and watch people pick up trash. I've talked to them about that. That's one reason they have laptops. And I've encouraged them, "Take them out, work on stuff." Uh, there, there's, it's a, it's a lot of paperwork kind of job. They've got to report to probation officers about the people that they're supervising. Talks to kind of attorneys office, deal with the courts. So there's a lot of things that they can do when they're sitting there in demand. It may not look like they're doing anything. Uh, you know, they call Towne Pennington, House Joe Vogel, and it's working for y'all. So they, they do a lot of things that you can't see. So I, I can understand why you would think that, but they, maybe they're not working every second that they're sitting there in demand, but they are working, so...
Well, I'll just, you know, people comes up and ask you something, you know, you, I don't know, you know? They even, I mean, these is, people out here in the public ask you, you know, "What are they doing and stuff?" You see them drive up and down roads. They don't have a single...
I understand.
See, they need to come here to the board and ask people here what's their goal. See, that's, you get that public going, attorneys, it's like Mr. Cobb's sitting there. You see what they've done and what the savings have done. And, uh, see, and that's public knowledge, as he says. But they, they don't know that. So they get out there in the community and talk about this, and see the trucks, they all this. Still coming up here, ask the chairman or any court member, call me at the house or whatever. I'll take what you're gonna do. But, but like I said, I mean, they, they made a lot of those look a lot better. I mean, they were sounding very trashy.
Well, in four lane, that restarted while I was counting, going all the way to something, yeah.
Excuse me. Uh, from four twenty-one up through the border stone face up through there. I mean, that face, shoot, it looked like slums, and they cleaned it up a lot. But I thank you for your time.
Appreciate you. Do you have a turn yet? Is that it?
Well, I think it was one more, but she's not made it, so...
Well, there again, you know, go ahead and end this, but, you know, like I say, I... I can, I can, I think I can speak for the whole board. We do appreciate you guys, uh, you know, regardless of what you think we did. Follow me. So let's move on to finance. Supplemental appropriations.
And the first one in there, this is reappropriation of the fast track broadband expansion grant that we received last year. That's just the carryover funds for this fiscal year. Uh, there are four there that involve funding, uh, from the either revenue that they've, uh, received from other agencies for, through the compt board, through the clerk's office, circuit court clerk's office. And then, uh, there's one for, uh, donation to the domestic violence program. The first one is a reappropriation. The other is just a supplemental appropriation.
Can they all be, uh...
They can all be created, I guess.
If they want to make that motion.
So maybe.
Yeah, you got a motion to approve all the supplemental appropriation.
Sure.
Got something all in favor? Uh, any of them? Okay, next we got old business, parking lot construction.
They don't have anything that I wanted to keep it up there. I didn't know how y'all wanted to proceed at this point, so I just wanted to keep it out there for discussion if there's any action to be had.
Didn't we vote to advertise for an ordinance to be able to design build?
No.
I know we decided to do that. It may not have been, I think it was Mr. Moses' idea to do the ordinance. Go in and do it, but it may not have come to a vote. But I, I feel reasonably confident, uh, that we decided that. So we didn't have this issue in the future. I'm positive with you.
About what?
The design build. About, so we could do it in the future. There had to be an ordinance or ordinance or something else. Or an ordinance resolution. And we decided to go forward with that so we could do design build in the future. And we may not have...
It, it wasn't clear to me that, that I was supposed to go ahead and advertise for a public hearing for that, so...
We all made that motion that we advertised for a public hearing, for an ordinance to be able to do design build under the code section. It was brought up last time. I don't recall what it was.
I said, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any of them? Now, did we, did we not discuss about, uh, on that, on that parking lot issue about the possibility of, uh, using our engineers on site? That we're using our ready throw? The bill?
We had, I gave you a, a cost proposal.
Okay.
That they provided, but, uh, and that's, that's where part, uh, that was, that may have been discussed briefly at the recess meeting on October twelfth. And then, uh, the board took action to, uh, go ahead and have them prepare a task order and approve, you approved it and had a task order prepared to do the cleaning of the building. Which was, really wasn't on the table, but, but that was what the board approved.
Right. So we gotta do something with this parking lot construction or it's gonna remain old business for like it has since, uh, since I came on board in two thousand and sixteen. If we don't take some type of action on it. Y'all got any suggestions?
If we do the, have the public hearing for the design build ordinance next month, I would think certainly by January, we could bid it out.
Maybe that's what we're discussing.
Well, you're gonna have to have, it's not just a one punch. You have to have even that in place.
Right.
Which is not, I mean, that's not something we should do.
It really depends on the engineer, what their schedule's like.
I guess what I was gonna ask is specific to the code section where it lays out what the requirements are that you have to have. You have to have a plan in place that corresponds with what the state requires. So I'm saying having that in place is gonna be... I don't know, Dane, do you, I mean, I don't know if you adopted it or you proposed it at the same time you do the ordinance itself, or if it's done subsequent.
I, I didn't get all of that.
If you recall, within that code section, I don't have it with me tonight, but you have to have, um, I'm not using the right terminology, the plan in place or, or that that mirrors what the state uses. And my question is whether or not that has to be in place at the same time that you adopt the ordinance, or if it can be done subsequent to that?
Well, it, it, uh, it becomes part of your procurement ordinance. We would have to adopt it as part of the procurement ordinance to use, uh, design build. And once that's in place, then the only other step that would be required is to have an engineer architect, either under contract or on staff, to advise you through that project.
So do you think you need that in place at the time that the ordinance is adopted?
It is the ordinance. I mean, uh, you, you don't have to have them hired at that point.
No, 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 not that, but, uh, that's what I'm saying. All of that is a part of the ordinance itself.
Yes. The, the design build process will be part of the ordinance.
Not specific to this project, just to...
No, it's, it's just in general that, that you are adopting that as, uh, an option for procurement or construction contracts, if you can do design build. for procurement or construction contracts that you can do design build rather than competitive bidding.
Well, to the point, I, I think we should, should make a vote on the ordinance at next month's meeting and then shoot for the end of January or middle of January to, uh, to get it out of bid. Well, we're talking about specking up a parking lot to park thirty cars on.
How you want to put that in motion?
I don't think there's anything to do in the motion till you get the ordinance. If, if we're going to utilize design build, I don't think there's anything to do till you have the ordinance in place.
I'm talking about to get it, uh, the, uh, meeting for next month.
Well, we.
We voted to. Laurie voted to advertise for the ordinance.
Okay. So we just need to advertise it then? And that's our consensus to advertise it for next month? Okay, next we got, uh, board appointments. Want to find off some use?
Uh, I got to face the name. Were we supposed to have two use and one adult?
Did, did we have?
One use has already been afforded.
One, one use has already been afforded, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I appointed one for my district about three months ago when it first came up, and we've been taking one of the others.
Yeah, it was back in August, I think.
I called, uh, principal Lee High. He nearly get back to, how many copies that say, got by me? Uh, so I'll table the use appointment.
Motion to table the use point.
For, for what it's worth, and it's, it's not district specific, right, it could be anybody. For, for what it's worth, the appointment that we made last time came from Lee High School. I don't know if it matters about getting one from Thomas Walker.
Well, Rob, I drive the board. That's, he's not having much success because it's pretty aggressive down there.
Hey, got a motion to table?
Second.
All the favor?
Uh.
Any vote? Next we got the Appalachian juvenile commission.
I want that to be adult appointment.
Oh, okay.
Did you point, I heard before, said?
About my, I'm, I'm not sure who that is.
I don't, I don't agree. And I didn't know we had a adult appointment. I, I make a motion to table that one.
Second.
Okay, all the favor?
Uh.
Okay, next got the, uh, Appalachian juvenile commission.
Mr. Chairman, I appoint, uh, I make a motion to appoint Sonny Brooks.
Second.
All the favor?
Uh.
Any vote? Next got the tourism committee.
Mr. Chairman, we made a motion, uh, we appointed Mary Beth Baker to build the expired term, but, but I don't know that it was an expired term, but.
It was an unexpired term, so she had to fill, finish out the remainder of that term.
And that probably only been ninety days ago and they haven't even had a meeting since she's been appointed. I think they're supposed to have one Thursday, but I make a motion to reappoint Mary Beth Baker.
That meeting is Thursday?
I think so. I could be wrong with that.
I think so too. It's, uh, five o'clock. Okay, I got a motion. I'll find out. It's a real point.
Mary Beth Baker.
Second.
Second, all the favor?
Uh.
Any vote? And next got the Woodway Water Authority.
I make a motion to the Board of Staff.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and second. Uh, all the favor?
Uh.
Any vote? Okay, next we got the administration office copier replacement.
Chairman, I put, uh, quotes in there, machines over seven years old. We've been having some repetitive issues with it for the past several months, especially if we're trying to get board packages out. Uh, we budgeted for it last year, but it's improved, uh, but with the continuation of the problems, I feel like it's probably time to replace it. I've got quotes, uh, from two different vendors on three different machines. Quote from Tri-City Business Machines for Tonica Manolka Viso four fifty I, that's the brand and the one we got now, five thousand fifty-five dollars. John Cole Incorporated out of Middlesbrough, uh, quoted, uh, two Carosira, uh, machines, uh, one with the, one with the fastest, the fastest, uh, page per minute is forty pages per minute, uh, at forty-nine, forty-five. Uh, the smaller one at thirty-two pages per minute is forty-one, forty-five. Based on the quotes, I would recommend the Carosira four oh three I, uh, at the forty-nine, forty-five. And we did add a larger document feeder, uh, to these as well. Uh, that's the only change we made from the, the one that we have in the office now. It's got a hundred sheet document feeder and if you've got a very large document to run through, you have to break it down into multiple units in order to get it processed through, so.
Is that pretty similar to the science doctor we purchased in?
Uh, this is the bigger one.
Same company though, right?
Uh, yes, yes.
Have we already put the other one on good deal?
Not yet. We were hoping yet because we were having problems with this. I, I originally said we go ahead and get rid of it and Jenny said, hold on to it because I may need it to get us through board package someday, so we were gonna hope until we got the new one.
I'd, I'd make a motion to purchase the, uh, cheapest one, forty-one hundred, forty-five dollars.
So we're going down in.
Isn't that what you advised?
No, I saw, I was going with the one that was higher value now.
Forty-nine, forty-five.
Because they're typically a, a heavier duty machine too.
I wouldn't go with the cheap example. No. Four thousand three I, that's my motion. And to put the, put the other two on good deals when that one comes in, when the new one comes in.
Oh, I'll say, uh, all the favor?
Uh.
Any vote?
I think too, when we, we did this in the past, but when we put the stuff on good deals, we need to land the newspaper, local newspaper sentence, we've got some stuff on good deals, otherwise people don't come to it's out.
It depending on what the availability, I think the availability on this machine is a little bit better than the one that we got for community development because it's not been in for about two weeks. Uh, but, uh, we're trying to get all the vehicles together at the same time and list everything at once and just do one local ad to cover all of that.
Okay, next we got the Quatbrox Community Center funding request.
And I included that, I, they did, uh, mention, uh, in their letter, the ARCA funds. Uh, that was the only one I had at that time. The other two came in after that, so that's the reason I put that in the board package.
But we won't make, do we have another recess meeting?
That's up to you all.
Do it all one time?
I don't think it's gonna be all of them.
Don't do them all at the same time.
You want to make a motion to the other?
Motion to table.
Second.
All the favor?
Uh.
Any vote? Okay, uh, board legalization appointments and appeals deadline.
That's mainly for information. I want you to be aware with the reassessment process coming to a close, uh, you need to be thinking about, uh, recommendations to the circuit court for appointment to the board of equalization. Uh, you can afford three or five members. Typically, we have done five members in, in all, in the last twenty-five years at least. Uh, code section requires that at least thirty percent of the members of the board be commercial or residential real estate appraisers, other real estate professionals, builders, developers, or legal or financial professionals. And we've never had anyone who was maybe active, well, we have had some that have probably still been active in that, but we have some who are retired with those backgrounds that we have used. But with a five-member board, at least two of the board members, one and a half, which rounds up to two, at least two of the board members would have to meet those, uh, requirements.
A lot of the requirements again.
Uh, it's, it's in the memo that's, that's in your packet, but they either need to be, uh, commercial or residential real estate appraisers, other real estate professionals, builders, developers, or legal or financial professionals. We've had, uh, members, we've had building trade skills who worked in that field, uh, and, uh, uh, one in particular I remember who, uh, was an educator in that field. We've had, uh, uh, people who worked with, uh, auction companies, uh, working with real estate sales and things of that nature. So that's typically what we've used in the past.
Okay.
Okay, next we got local law enforcement.
One, one other, one other that I need to, to mention, the second paragraph in that. We have to, uh, in the notice of the change in assessment or the notice of the new assessment that the assessor will send out, uh, we're required, uh, by ordinance to set a date, uh, the last date that they can request a hearing. Otherwise, that can continue for the entire twelve months following. And, uh, we've typically made that cutoff in, somewhere around the end of March or sometime up into April. I'm recommending that that deadline be set for April fifteenth and we will advertise that for ordinance for next month as well.
I'll make a motion for that effect. Okay, second, all the favor?
Uh.
Any vote? Okay, now we got the local law enforcement.
For about three years, this program was, uh, on hold because Virginia and several other states had lawsuits about this issue, so no money was flowing from the feds to Virginia and therefore wasn't coming on down to the localities. That's all been settled. Uh, they're gonna hit the, uh, the JAG grants, what they call them, uh, through pretty rapid order. We have the notice of our first one for the FY eighteen year, uh, in the amount of eleven hundred and eighty-five dollars. One thing is different in this, uh, typically there's a ten percent local match. There is no local match required on this, uh, so it's, it's all grant funds. Uh, we request, uh, the board consider accepting this. There's about six or seven categories that, it's six categories that they can, uh, spend these funds under. Typically, the sheriff's office has used these for, under the provincial and education category. Uh, we will be within the, in December, we'll receive notice on the fiscal year nineteen funds, and I think in March, we'll receive notice on the fiscal year twenty. So they're gonna stack pretty, pretty rapid, get collated.
Make a motion that we accept the grant?
Second. All the favor?
Uh.
Any vote? Okay, next we got reports and recommendations from our county. Laura, reports and recommendations from county administrator.
I think she said she yielded her time to me. I've, I've gotten several here, but some of this is more informational, some of it would be, uh, a request for some action. On, uh, trucks and equipment over at the transfer station, uh, we have, uh, there is still a tremendous backlog on being able to get trucks. Uh, we did not budget for any truck purchases this, this year, but, uh, the superintendent is requesting that the board consider advertising for bids at this time. Uh, we have, uh, and I've got, sorry, I need to get these up to you. These are the existing trucks, mileage and hours on each truck and a very quick statement on how often those vehicles are used. Most of them, not all of them on a daily basis, some of them are backups, but, uh, the spare boom truck is getting more usage than what it has been getting. But, uh, as far as our garbage trucks, we have a two thousand seven that is our spare truck. The other two trucks have, uh, the newest truck, the twenty nineteen, has seventy-three thousand miles, but twenty sixteen has a hundred and seventy-one thousand miles already. At the current time, uh, there is a sixteen to twenty-month delay in getting delivery. That's what they, that's what the vendors are telling us. Uh, so we were looking at the possibility of going ahead and, and putting a bid out. It would not, we wouldn't be actually buying it until the next fiscal year. Uh, and that, it could actually, uh, that could push us, that'll push us into twenty twenty-three, probably in spring, spring of twenty twenty-three taking delivery. So you're looking at having another two years worth of our entire on that twenty sixteen truck. Uh, as far as the boom truck, of course, the twenty fourteen is the newest boom truck. It has two hundred and eleven thousand miles. The, the older spare truck, the two oh oh six, only has two hundred and thirty-seven thousand miles. But they are starting to have some electrical issues, uh, with, with the newer one, the twenty fourteen, and the, uh, expected delay time on those has been listed at twelve to sixteen months. So looking for possible permission to go ahead and advertise for both trucks.
Need a motion for that? I'll make that motion.
Second.
All the favor?
Uh.
Any vote?
Keeping with solid waste to get out of order, I hope I don't travel back to the others. I mentioned last month about the city of Bristol, which is where our garbage is hauled to. Uh, they, they're taking more holidays off than what they typically have been. For the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, they will be closed Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We'll have four days there that, uh, which we don't pick trash up on Sundays, but they'll have a four-day cycle on both of those holiday weekends. That Wednesday will be the last day through the week that we'll be able to haul any trash over there. Our, then, our contractor who hauls our trash has four trailers available to put waste in. The Thanksgiving holiday, I don't, um, well, I won't say that we don't have an issue. We've had, uh, we've had seven holidays, uh, during the course of this calendar year that we have had waste on the pad overnight, uh, which is not allowed, but, uh.
Did you say seven holidays?
Yes. Uh, and those are staggered from March through October, that we have had some of our waste on the pad. There's no way we can handle everything at Christmas if we leave the sites open. And I know, uh, you don't like to close the sites, but they get buried if you don't close them. Uh, but if we bring the waste in, I'm not sure if we haul all through the Christmas holiday or, or haul, typically they would take one day off and not haul. Uh, but on Christmas Day, usually it starts getting loaded up and then it's gonna fall that Sunday will be the next day. Uh, and because of the way the holidays fall this year, the state has declared the twenty-third as an additional holiday, which is the Thursday, so that's why we've got that four-day span in there. So Wednesday will be the last day we can haul. We'll have waste on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and the twenty-fifth that could potentially be coming into the site. If we, we typically, sometimes they, they'll either volunteer to go out on Christmas Day during the afternoon and start cleaning up waste or wait till the following day, which in that case is gonna be on Sunday. But I mean, if we try to haul everything in and keep the sites clean, we're, I don't know if there'll be enough room to put it on the pad because if you block the pad off, you can't get in there to actually push it on into the trucks if, if you fill it completely up. So, uh, again, the Thanksgiving, Gary had submitted a potential, uh, plan to deal with some of this. One was.
Let me get my calendar out so I get the right dates.
One of his was to close on Thanksgiving Day, both the, uh, transfer station and the convenience centers, and just have everything closed and locked up for that day. Reopen them on the twenty-sixth. Uh, he would have, uh, three, four, four employees out on that day, and he's trying to stagger this so that all the employees would get at least two days off during that period, so he'd be working partially. So he'd be working partial crews on, on the days that they did work. And not try to run the trucks and keep the sites cleaned up. On Christmas, he's proposing to close the convenience center sites at 1:00 on Christmas Eve, which is a Friday. Leave them closed on Saturday and reopen them on Sunday. And then, of course, the garbage trucks, run three trucks and two boom trucks on Monday, trying to bring everything in.
I'm sure that's not a good idea for our land. And I know it's- It may be a reasonable thing to do, but it's not a logical thing to do, because there's been trash gonna be all over the hillsides up there.
What's the additional day? How many days are you saying that Bristol is shut down, that they're not normally shut down?
Well, well, they used to open, they used to be open even over, a few years ago. They were open on the Friday after Thanksgiving, but they're not anymore. But just like for the Christmas holidays, even though the 23rd has been deemed additional holiday time by the state, which is a Thursday, normally they would have stayed open that day. But they, they did similar to what we do. They modified the state holiday schedule, even though their other county employees were off. They tried to keep their landfill open to take waste on, on at least a portion of that pass. But the last couple of years, they, they pretty much tightened it up. And this year, they're, they're strictly closing every holiday that there is, the landfill is closed.
So they're closing the 23rd, December?
23rd, 24th, 25th.
And normally, they're just closed 24th and 25th?
Yes.
So it's one extra day on each holiday?
And of course, we're off half a day on the, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, but they will be taking waste that day.
Have we talked to Wyans about whether or not they could take those days of trash or a day there?
Our contract with Bristol is exclusive.
It says we have to take all our trash there, or?
I'm pretty sure it's, that's, that was the way it was originally drawn up. Because what they do, they wanna lock in and know that they got your tonnage. They always targeted a specific tonnage that they wanted to process from any, any vendor that they took it from, so that they could count on that tonnage every month. And I, I can check it, but I'm pretty sure that is the case.
I don't care to pay them for the tonnage, but the trash has gotta go somewhere. If we have to pay them for an extra day's tonnage that we don't use, that's, I think on average, we haul two, two loads a day?
Well, for the full week, yes, probably.
Two loads a day, 22 tons loads, 44 tons at $18? If it was tip and fee?
Yeah, it's bucks. I mean, the tonnage is bucks.
I mean, it, it's an insignificant sum of money to keep the trash dumpsters open. If Wyans will take it-
I'm not sure, we can check the Wyans, I'm not sure if they'll be open on those days.
That probably won't be-
I'll have to check.
If they're not open, they're gonna have the same issue as us, which maybe they'll shut them. You know, shut their, shut their sites.
Well, some of the, some of the counties, I'm not sure about Wyans on this. At least two of the counties in our area close theirs on Sundays.
I'm not for shutting the convenience centers. I mean, it's a problem we've found about for four or five months, I'd say now. And I think at least the majority of the board is voice that we're not for shutting them, shutting them down. So I think we need to come up with a solution quickly. We had to rent two or three coal trailers to put it in. I, I don't care what we have to do fixing, I just wanna fix it.
Yeah, I, I'm certainly not in favor of closing them down, because I see too much trash that just went through this stuff. Now, there's gotta be a solution. I mean, if they're gonna, if they're actually certainly, I mean, if they want to lock us in to getting all of our trash and then they're gonna start deciding when, you know, when they're gonna take our trash. I mean, it's gonna get to a point where it's gonna be a, a yes man to whatever their demands are. At some point, we gotta take another alternative.
I agree.
We'll explore these options, because we've come up with them. I told you already about the additional ARPA fund request that we received. I don't know if you'll recall this or not, but we had, a few years ago, we, we bought some used cages, for lack of a better term, on wheels that Wyans County had, we bought in Wyans County, bought them for, the electoral board to use to put all their voting equipment in and take them out to the sites. The voting equipment has changed since that time. They stopped using them probably three years ago, at least three years ago, when the animal control took the cages, they were laying them, and they took them over to use them, potentially for pup cages and temporary storage and things like that. He's had a request from some of the, the local rescue organization to donate a few of those to them to use for cat cages. Is there any objection from the board to donating some of those to them? He doesn't need all of them, he just took them to have.
If there's a problem with it?
There is no objection, we'll move forward with that. We will have, speaking, when we did the budgets or the supplemental appropriations, we will have another public hearing on the budget supplement next month, which we did the school boards. But our careers funds that are unexpended from last year that are, have been spent in this fiscal year, we'll need to appropriate them, and it will be more than a $500,000 limit that we can do immediately. So we'll schedule a public hearing for that for next month. Also, and I know it's on hold as far as the courts are concerned right now, but there are some issues that we will have to deal with if the federal vaccine mandate goes into effect, because the county will be subject to that. And so, you know, we'll have to establish a plan for how that will be put into effect, how we will gather the information from employees, the testing that would be required from people who are not vaccinated, whether they would be responsible for paying that cost, or whether the county would, different issues like that. I can bring back additional information maybe at the December meeting. I'm assuming, since the court's got it on hold, that the deadlines may have to be pushed forward, because by the time the court's resolved it, we may already be beyond the point that anyone could be fully vaccinated by January 4th if they're not already, especially if they take the two dose shot, because there's a 30 day waiting period, or at least 28 days, a waiting period in between those two doses. But just want, want you to be aware of that.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I would not vote to fire somebody because they didn't take the shot.
You give them, they have the option under that, under that mandate. They don't have to take the vaccine, but if they don't take the vaccine, they have to take the weekly COVID test and they have to wear a mask in the workplace if they're around other employees.
And VDOT's in this situation now, and it's costing them a fortune to get all these tests done. They're, I think they're tested more than once a week. I talked to a VDOT employee recently, he was mentioning how much it was costing just for him. And I think people should take the vaccine, but I would vote to fire them. I would vote to make them get a test or to, I don't wanna pay them to get a test, because they won't take the shot. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I think if the rest of the board feels that way, I wouldn't spend any time thinking about it.
I certainly feel that way. I mean, I, I certainly am not gonna be one to be responsible for somebody taking the shot that they didn't want to take.
Well, my, I guess one of the, I did this for two reasons as far as bringing it up. One, it is out there, even though it's on hold, it is out there and it's being administered by Occupational Safety and Health Administration. Initially, from what I heard preliminary, before they actually issued all this earlier this month, initially, they were talking about a thousand dollar fine. Now, they're saying it could, it was 13,000 something per occurrence if they find a genuine violation as an employer, not, not biting with it. So that $13,000 per occurrence certainly got my attention, because we don't have that budget.
Well, we're not the ones that portion mandate and only pay you, that is federal mandate, so.
I'm just-
That can be played two different ways.
Just reporting what I feel I have to. And that's all I have. Oh, no, it's not, no, it's not.
I was about to rat you out.
Mr. Cobb, well, we had a text conversation earlier today. And this, it was discussed several months ago about the possibility of allowing board members to participate in meetings electronically. There's a couple, well, it can be due to permanent or temporary disability or other medical condition of the board member or a family member that prevents them from being able to physically be present. Or it can be due to a personal matter, which is identified by them, that they, they need to be absent from the meeting, but would still like to participate from a remote location. They're allowed to do that either, well, in our case, since we have 12 regularly scheduled meetings, you can, you can miss no more than 25% of those, which would be three a year, max. It does require notification to the chairman at least by the day of the meeting. And in this, I, I told, I told Mr. Cobb, I would put together a draft or something to present to you tonight to consider. And in this, I used, I added, it's made it a little more strict than the state. It just says to notify the chair on or before the day of the meeting. I put at least one hour prior to the start of the meeting, because I realize emergencies can occur quickly, but still, it's hard to get the rooms ready and set up, make sure we've got the phones ready and everything like that. That'll be our only way to do it, is through, through the telephone. But I tried to keep this very simple. There's a provision in this same code section that I did not include in here. This only deals with what I mentioned. There's also provisions to allow board members to meet when there has been either a state or locally declared emergency. But I did not get into that for purposes of this tonight. I felt like we've kept it as simple as possible for tonight. But this would also, you have to have a written policy in place before this can be done. You have to have a quorum physically located in the meeting place. So there would have to be at least three board members here. You could have a max of two board members absent who participated electronically. And we would have to make arrangements to be able to capture their voice in meetings, so that their comments could be heard. It does require an approval, and I made, I tried to make the approval simple as well. I put the approval for a member to participate in a scheduled meeting from a remote location by electronic communication means shall be granted by the chair if the member meets all the provisions out subdivision A1, 1A, and 1D, which is mandated by state codes.
Mr. Poe, that's something we've been doing at least over the last year and a half. And when you do have somebody joining the meeting, you've got to make sure that it's recorded in your minutes.
Yes, you have to record the who is participating remotely. You have to also-
Where they're participating from.
Yes, where, and the location they are participating from. So all that has to be included in minutes.
I think that's a good thing. Very well could not have been here.
So need a motion on this policy?
And after Mr. Poe does, I'm glad you made that comment, because I failed to pick up the portion about it. Wait a minute. I'm trying to see if the minutes, I think that's all still required. I may have to make a tweak to this to include that in, in this policy. So if you're going to approve it, approve it with, with that change, that that'll be added to it.
If you brought the email, John, and give him-
It's, it's in, I've got the code section here in front of me, and I've read that today. But I failed to pick that portion up. I was picking out bits and pieces, because some of this applied to state bodies, some applied to the local government bodies, some applied to regional bodies. Each one had a different section in the code, so I was, I was cutting and pasting to put it together as quickly as I could.
Okay, so you need a motion to approve?
Approve it with the changes.
I'll make that motion.
I second that. All in favor? Any opposed?
And that is all I have.
See, this is Mr. Poe.
You're written off. All right, reports and recommendations to the board?
Just a couple of things. Commonwealth Attorney's Office mentioned the last week, if they don't have an emergency buzzer. They were talking about an incident where a guy jumped through the window, front desk. I think, as I recall, the old Commonwealth Attorney's Office down where the judges' chambers are, had an emergency buzzer. My mother's office has an emergency buzzer. There are a few offices that have an emergency buzzer. They don't have a back door to get out if something happens. It's an inexpensive fix, and they're down beyond the double doors where the bailiffs aren't going here if something happens. I think that they should probably have an emergency buzzer in that front office that rings down to, I'm not sure how most of them are set up, I'm guessing they-
Great, good.
So I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Any opposed?
A while back, one of the officers approached me, I think approached the chairman and maybe Mr. Poe, about flashlights and, I'm trying to remember what the other thing was, flashlights, tasers. And I mentioned to Mr. Poe about spike strips. As I understand it, they have three sets of spike strips for the sheriff's office now. And they have to get them out of their trunks and when it shift change, you give them to the next shift. I propose that we get three more sets of spike strips, so they don't have to swap them back and forth every day. And I, and I think I asked Mr. Poe maybe to talk to Major Woodard about the flashlights. Did I do that, or I just think?
No, we, we listened to Ty talk about it at the Republican meeting that night, that's the only time I heard it.
There was something when we were texting about the grant for the tasers. I think you sent something out to all of us about the grant for the tasers.
Yeah.
And I wanna say that I said that I wanted to, wanted you to talk to, to Major Woodard. And maybe it was in Poe's conversation, but-
You just mentioned, it was like about flashlights and two more sets of spike strips.
Two more?
Yeah.
Okay, does he have, well, they're all flashlight. He bought his, and I don't remember if he was saying that they either weren't giving the flashlight or it was a crumbly flashlight, if there was something, do you remember?
I think they're all issue one, but I'm not sure, I can't say so much it goes into that.
Or, but maybe he was saying it belonged to big lights, or there was, he made a compelling case for it at some point. But anyway, if y'all have a problem with Poe giving with Major Woodard about the spike strips, seeing what he recommends, and flashlights, if he thinks that they've seen them.
I'd give three sets of spike strips.
Yeah, that's what I said, I apparently said two in the text message, but I said three tonight. Because there's usually three officers on duty, three or four. And that's, that's all I have.
Is that in the form of a motion?
It can't be.
All in favor?
Since we're spending money, I prefer it.
Do we need to talk with the gentleman about the airport tomorrow? Do we need to talk with the gentleman about the airport tomorrow?
I suppose that means I can leave.
I suppose so. We kill you probably if you prefer.
Absolutely, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you. Got your number, I think.
Do we need to talk about it?
As far as you're concerned? I don't, well, yes and no. I think we might want to talk about it in a closed session, I think.
That's probably what you were referring to. If you're okay with it.
That mean I can need to stay?
Yep.
That's fine. I'm good either way.
If you can, if you can, that's fine.
Oh, I'm good. I mean, he's... I got nowhere else to be tonight.
Right.
He's been here a long time, I think he needs to get something done for his money.
Larry, you got anything?
I'll go into closed session first, I think.
I got, I got one thing that, that kind of relates to something that the city said. I think as we all are well aware of, you know, tragedy stuck, struck, an officer up in Big Stone Gap this weekend, and certainly our friend around him, you know, it was, it was just a true tragedy, it should never happen. But it just kind of enlightened you on what our officers deal with on a daily basis, you know, we're here in the little places, we feel safe every time we go out the door, you know, we just feel like we're okay. And, and it just kind of hit home to me, it's also with the fact, you know, I guess getting back to the sheriff's office request for their pay that they had asked for. And, you know, right now, I, I would think that most of the officers around here are feeling kind of, I know they're all sad, and I can see why, and I can see why they would feel endangered all the time. So I'd like, you know, I'd like to go forward with, with the sheriff's request on, on those sworn-in officers we were talking about.
Are you talking about the road officers, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, they'd be sworn-in officers, anybody that got sworn in. And, of course, I know we, we, we talked about some different stuff, but, you know, I don't know, I don't know that there is a certain amount that, that, that justifies anything, you know, when somebody's life's on the line daily. But I certainly would, you know, welcome input from the other board members, you know, what you all think, you know, as fair, you know, we got a great group of people that, that works in that office, and I, I know for a fact that there were several, I mean, several, that volunteered to go be part of that ceremony that took place on Saturday.
There was another ceremony that was taking place on, in Big Stone today, as we came through Big Stone Gap, good crowd.
But that certainly, I think it kind of shows where our officers, they are, they're very respectful of what goes on, not only right here, but elsewhere. Yeah, but, yeah, I agree with you, but I, I'd like to take some action, you know, to, you know, I'd actually like to take some action tonight. But like I say, if we can go into closed session and discuss that, what you're already going into closed session for, we find them.
Mr. Chairman, we're talking about the road officers.
Well, if anybody's sworn in, I guess that'd be a road officer. He doesn't swear, everybody that works in there in. Because at any given time, any of those, any of those people could be out, called out on anything, workers are shorthanded all the time. So, you know, that's all I have, I just wanted, I just wanted to get that in there, let our people especially know that we're thinking about, and certainly thinking about the officer that laid his life on the line at Big Stone and his family. So, say if you want to make a motion.
I make a motion, we're going to closed session for two twenty dash thirty-seven eleven, seven, eight, one for personnel, four is personal matters not relating to public business, six investment public funds, and eight consultation with counsel.
Second. All in favor? Any of both?